We're going to call this meeting to order. Martha Jo, if I may do my call?
Yes, I'm in here.
Ellen Ward?
Here.
Pat Ruby?
Here.
John Bastin?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
You can join me in the public, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Apologize for the seating today. Evidently, we've got a couple of people out and it just went unnoticed, I guess. The room maybe wasn't utilized today and so, but it looks like everybody's comfortable, so. I believe we only have on our recognition of visitors today would be the Lake Havasu Education
All right, since we have new board members, today we are just introducing who we are to our new board. Most of you know who we are, but this is, so we came up with a little thing. Who are we? We are educators, we are staff certified and classified. We are parents, we are community members, we are people who believe in the public education system. But most importantly, we are advocates, advocates for education. We are advocates for staff and we are advocates for students. We follow our legislators while in session and create relationships while out. We follow policies as they make their steps through the House and the Senate and educate all along the way. Who are we? We are LHCEA, Lake Havasu City Education Association. So, I'm giving this to all of our new board members and our directors. So, it has our contact information, our email, our Facebook if you have not turned that on Facebook yet. And you will get lots of information and policy updates and such, so we welcome you and we're excited for two to four years. I love you.
Thank you, Carol. Martha Jo, do we have any, I have that receipt and no calls to public? Okay, thank you. So we'll move into our action items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion where you approve the consent calendar. Second. Madam President, may I get 314 moved to 32?
Yes. Can we renew that second in that?
I thought we had to table it before we could discuss.
Oh, okay. You know what, you can request that these be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? That's what he did to 32. For three? I believe we still move on with the vote for the consent agenda and then we go to 32. Alan Ward?
Here, yes.
John Bastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Ruby?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Just a comment on 314. We talked a little bit about this in the work session last week. And 314 basically is the voucher system. And this is where we list everybody that we pay. And there was a building renewal grant and I questioned that as to what that was, and that's monies that were received from the State School Facilities Board for building repair. So I just wanted to add that comment to it so that we got the information out to everybody.
Understood. So now I need a motion for 3.2.
I would move that we approve 3.2.
Martha Jo? Pat Ruby?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
John Bastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
And Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to old business. Action item 4.1, approval to secure Arizona Master Teacher Program Grant through the Arizona K-12 Center. Turn it over to Brad.
I'm going to read this and then before you vote, I have a group that has put together a presentation to clarify some things, so.
Great.
All right, Madam President, Governing Board has recommended the Board approve our request to secure Arizona Master Teacher Program Grant through the Arizona K-12 Center. Eligible applicants may apply for up to three years of funding with year one at $100,000, year two at $85,000, and year three at $70,000. The grant would assist our district with developing and supporting our newest members of the teaching profession. Our district's newest teachers would benefit greatly from the professional development provided by the Arizona K-12 Center's Professional Learning Plan. One of our district's goals is to provide teachers with meaningful professional development opportunities and to retain them. The grant would provide financial support for a three-year period at which time we can apply, reapply for the same grant. Our district would provide identified master teachers who would work directly with beginning teachers. We would strive to develop more master teachers in our effort to build teacher leadership capacity and we would continue to support teachers interested in entering the pathway to become nationally board certified. We recognize that student learning increases when a child has a high-quality teacher and a teacher's practice improves when it is supported through a collaborative work environment that provides ongoing mentoring or coaching. Securing the aforementioned grant would assist us in improving and sustaining a high-quality Before I begin, I'd like to introduce some people that were involved in completing our application process. And then they'll have some parts in this brief presentation. Kristi Olson, she is our academic coach at Nola Elementary School. I've known Kristi professionally for a long period of time, being a high-quality teacher, instructional coach. Christina Muselman, amazing first-grade teacher, I worked with her at Orangie Elementary School. She's also in the National Board Certification process or certification. Thank you. She's done quite well. And Michelle Yusso is our grant specialist, she's involved with the budget process. And of course Diana was the instrumental helping us, this guidance on how we applied to this grant. That said, Jenny Sutner is one of our acclaimed teachers. She was just given the National Rural Teacher of the Year Award and she spoke recently to the Arizona School Boards Association. And they asked her a question, how do we retain and keep teachers in rural districts? Because we're in a crisis right now in education nationally as well, not just in the state of Arizona. We have fewer people going into the field of education and we're losing more people in the first three years as they enter the field. So we're struggling. And she said, I'm going to quote her, when they asked her, how can we start to retain teachers in rural districts? She said, I see the answer in mentorship and meaningful professional development. Right now, where we have issues in our school district is we have about 38% of our current teachers have less than two years' experience. And our mentor pool is shrinking, so when you try to find a mentor to service these new teachers, we're struggling in that area as well, simply because we don't have the numbers. So this grant will help us in that area and in several areas as well. So with that said, oops. The purpose of this grant that we're trying to secure in our application process is again to develop our mentor program, help our, service our mentees, the quality mentors and increase that pool. Also, it gives us some resources utilized, we'll have training available that our mentors will be able to attend. We don't have a manual, there's not anything out there for guidance on how you become a mentor. It's something that you hope, there's a skill set that teachers have, their experiences as classroom teachers and then in their leadership capacity that they're able to share that experience, but not all can. So we're trying to develop that pool and provide some professional development as coaches to help teachers. The third thing is to increase our master teacher pool. To become a master teacher, that means you're capable of coaching. And coaching is a very important, powerful tool in retaining teachers. They have a mentor and a coach, they're able to go to that person and see examples and talk openly, that's a key. And then we would provide our mentors with training as well on top of that. Our deep assessment, why are we even going after this grant? Well, if you look at the statistics in the packet that I shared, we have a 28% turnover, I believe, in the 2016 sense of the school year. And we've had a continual turnover rate where we're losing our first and second and third-year teachers that are leaving. And then some of our district teachers are actually leaving as well because of salary issues among other things. So we're struggling in that area, so what are you going to do to do something different? So this grant would give us the resources and then the opportunity to try something different to help retain teachers. We're doing the same old, same old, we're going to get the same results and people continue to leave our school. The other thing is the quality of professional development this grant would provide us. So we'd have a continuum that can see growth and teachers will be able to self-monitor and they would have a coach that would guide them through their first two years of education, which is important. Our plan is pretty simple, it's based on standards. The grant would provide resources, it's not going to cost our district anything outside of the grant. And again, we have people that are responsible for coordinating and overseeing the grant, and I'm one of those. So make sure the grant is, we follow through on everything that we say we're going to do with the grant, the money's spent the way it's supposed to be spent for our budget. And we'll be very transparent. I'll give updates to the Board only every three to four months on where we are with the grant if we secure it, that's the idea. That said, I'm going to turn it over to Christina Muselman to talk a little bit about the National Board process.
My name is Christina Muselman, I'm with the district now, this is my 13th year with the district. And sitting in this room is why I chose to, one, stay in Lake Havasu as a teacher. I have teachers in here that were my high school teachers when I went to Lake Havasu High School and graduated. My master teacher when I student taught is sitting in the room. And teachers who have had their children or their grandchildren are in the room who encouraged me to go through for National Board. So this starts us at the pre-service teacher and you work your way up until the professional teacher and then you go out for National Board Certification. In other professions such as medicine, we wouldn't want to go to a doctor that wasn't board certified, it's expected that they become board certified. In education, it's an exception to have teachers that are board certified, there's only about 3% in America that are board certified. Part of that is just some don't know about the process, don't know to go through it. A lot of teachers go and they do their master's degree and then they stop there and they go on to become principals. Board certification is just another way to advance yourself and advance the profession in the classroom. Moving on from board certification is Arizona Master Teacher. So teachers that become board certified, they then can move on to that next step and become Arizona Master Teachers. That's something that I'm working on within this year, between this year and next, to achieve that on my own as well. But this is just the process that we need to move our district forward, is have more teachers go out.
All of the professional development that we want to provide to novice teachers, to experienced teachers, to National Board Certified teachers and to Arizona Master Teachers revolve around these five core propositions. These were first published in 1989 and they were revised again in 2016. And what they do is they really set forth the vision of the teaching profession, what does accomplished teaching look like? This is comparable to Medicine's Hippocratic Oath. So proposition one, accomplished teachers recognize that students have individual differences and they adjust their practice. Teachers understand and apply knowledge of child development to their teaching practice. The second core proposition, teachers can generate multiple paths of knowledge, they understand how knowledge in their subject is organized and linked across disciplines. Core proposition three, accomplished teachers keep students engaged in the learning process. They assess student progress and they examine their own practice in relationship to that student's progress. Core proposition four, teachers, no matter where they are on that continuum, are open, they're eager, and they're dedicated to continuous improvement. And core proposition five, teachers are eager to work with their colleagues to improve their own practice. And even probably more importantly to that in our community, accomplished teachers see families and the community as an essential component in the learning community. I think that we can all agree that we want our teachers, whether it is first-year teacher straight out of the university or a teacher that's been in this district for 25 years, we want the teachers in Lake Havasu to prove these five core propositions day in and day out in their teaching. We want nothing more than that for our community and for our children.
Michelle, you're just going to talk a little bit about the budget piece.
And I was tasked with creating a budget for this grant. As Mr. Gardner already mentioned, it is a three-year grant with a proposed $100,000 the first year, $85,000 the second year, $70,000 in the third year. So I'll go through the entire budget for the three years and where our projections are. The first part is personnel, salaries, and benefits. The grant will pay for 25% of two teachers' salaries. Kristi Olson's and Jenny Sutner's will be our Arizona Master Teachers for this grant. 25% of each of their salaries will come out of the grant and then the other portions of their position will be funded. 75% to Kristi Olson under Title I, where she's currently budgeted down. And for Jenny, 25% will come out of Title and fixtures that will come out of Emmett and as I already mentioned, 25% will come out of the Master Teacher Grant. So that's projections of their salaries for the next three years, that's 25%. And then this is the benefits that we have to include for any staff we're funded under a grant. And that includes Medicare, Social Security, long-term disability, retirement, workforce compensation and so forth, as well as 25% of their annual insurance premium. The next piece is stipends, supplies, and other expenses. I'm going to go through this line by line and then you can ask questions at the end. The first line up here is technology. This is our technology line, that's where we'll provide iPads, cameras, tripods to the three master teachers that we have identified this year. We haven't mentioned it, would be Jan Esmei. And then a subscription to Atvex, which is their electronic subscription that, I don't know if you want to mention anything about that, Kristi, what that is.
Atlas is an electronic subscription to videos of National Board Certified teachers that comes along with transcripts and written commentary about the lessons they're teaching so that teachers in Havasu can really see accomplished teaching across the spectrum of the United States from board certified teachers.
Thank you. And so you'll see there's a lot, I know it's difficult to see, but there's a large portion of the budget up here for the first year. And it declines dramatically in year one and year two as the grant declines. The second portion is the Professional Learning Plan kit, which would be used for professional development purposes, purchased from the Arizona K-12 Center, that they will incorporate and embed into the professional development of our teachers and mentors. And we have three identified master teachers, each of those teachers would receive a stipend of $2,500 of each, and that would be for any duties outside of their regular contracted duties that could inhibit a school or access a school. Next line would be substitute teachers for the three master teachers. The next line I'm going to get into is the required professional development component of the grant. So these teachers will be required to attend trainings in Phoenix and or Tucson, so we want to make sure we provide substitute teachers in their classrooms if we need them. So that is our master teachers' subpay at $80 per day, that's the rate of subs. We have substitute teachers for National Board Certified teachers. We talked about as a committee or as a group when we put this grant together, is that we'll have up to eight National Board Certified candidates who will be released from work for up to two days to work on that certification. And that will give them subs in their classroom to be able to work on that process. This next line is 50 substitute teacher days for teachers and mentors to be able to work flawlessly together. The way that we'll break down the 50 sounds like a lot, we have six elementary schools that will give five days to each of the schools for a total of 30 days. The middle one, the high school, which we typically have a greater turnover, will provide 10 days to each of those schools, so we have a total of 30 and 20, 50 days of substitute teachers at $80 a day. The next line will be stipends. We have new teacher at the beginning of every year in July before all teachers come back and that's where professional development is provided for a week for our new teachers. This will allow us to bring back 10 of the mentors to work with those new teachers during that week of new teacher orientation. They'll come back for half days, for the five days that we have training. Down here next, we have certificate stipends for our mentors. This is an opportunity for our mentors to participate in pre-candidacy and be paid for attending them should they choose to do that, and this is an optional component. So there are eight days of training for pre-candidacy, we calculated up to 40 mentors could receive the training, get $100 for attending the eight days total. Then we have another opportunity for our care of your teachers. We've been, we've had the last number of years, two years of a program for our new teachers. This grant would give us the opportunity to provide a third year of training for the pre-teachers in that they can voluntarily or optionally participate in the pre-candidacy program and be paid just like we would our mentor teachers. So we have 20, up to 26 of them could be paid for the eight days of training for pre-candidacy. And then down here are the benefits. All of the green section are the salaries and then these, this is the approximately 20%, which would be a benefit for all of this section here.
Michelle, on the 15 substitute teachers, the second and third year, they goes down and the next one down are the same, and then it, could you explain why that?
Yes, because the grant declines from $100,000 to $85,000 and $70,000, we had to de-prioritize and what we needed to maybe reduce. And what we looked at is maybe looking at one of our other grant funds and if we wanted to continue that, to place that into grant and another money would come out of them and it would come out of another grant if we have that possibility. Good question, thank you. I do notice here in year three, since you brought that up, there are some things that are not included in year three for obvious reasons, the grant is going to reduce down to $70,000 by year three. So that would be the benefit. And then the last slide here on the budget is professional development. Now there are some required trainings as being a grant recipient if we are awarded this grant. The first one is, I'm going to go through these, kind of explain this. These three lines are connected together. The first line is the professional development registration. The team of four people would attend two types of trainings, mentor forums and then a professional learning series academy for each of the three years. And this is required training as part of being a grant recipient. And that would be Jenny Sutner, Kristi Olson, Jan Esmei, and the project director. So that would be the registration, they're $1,900, it's $1,900 per person, and so this is an estimate of what's going to cost us in our registration for the two different trainings. This is the required meals and hotel for those people to attend this training up above for the three-year period. And the last part is the third component, which is the fleet or the vehicle usage for all of the travel for those two series of trainings. Now the bottom portion here is the blue section, you'll notice we do not have funding in year two and three, but this is something we wanted to start with in year one. And this is being able to provide eight new teachers the opportunity to attend a Beginning Teacher Institute, which occurs during December, so there will be no subpay for this training, as well as six certified teachers to attend the leadership training, so maybe more of our experienced teachers. We talked about as a group by either, this would either be a principal nomination or there would be some type of application form that people would present in order to be one of those participants. And just like the lines above, this is the registration cost, this is the hotel and meal cost for this training, and this is the fleet for this training as well. And so you'll see, we have geared it up by the end of each of the three years. The money cannot be carried forward, so we don't spend in the first year at $100,000, we simply forfeit that amount of money. Now typically with grants, we can amend the grant, so let's say we're kind of projecting over a three-year period, if anything needs to change, we'll go back to report, let you know about the changes that we made in the grant budget, and then we would submit it to Arizona K-12 for a total. That, that is the budget portion of the grant. Now open up for questions for the whole team.
I have a question. What percentage of our teachers are nationally board certified?
We have eight total, I'm not sure what the percentage is.
Well, your husband's sitting out there, he can quit. I'll be now.
How many certified teachers do we have?
Two sixty-four.
So eight out of 264, we're four out of about 132.
So what's the percentage?
Roughly 3%.
Oh, so we're at the national? Has it ever been more, have we ever had?
Yes, we have actually at one time had 15 to 16 National Board Certified teachers. We've lost the majority of them moving out of state, we've had to retire. We do currently have six teachers in the National Board process who are working towards certification right now and we have six who have, six to eight, who have registered for pre-candidacy starting next week. So we are working on growing those National Board Certified members that then become master teachers.
And I believe you're the only district in the county that has National Board Certified teachers.
Well, when we recruit teachers, this is going to be kind of a shining star for teachers to recognize our district. I commend all of you for your work on this.
Before we do any more questions, can I get a motion on this item so we can go into discussion?
I move that we apply for a grant for Arizona's Master Teacher Program.
Discussion, sorry, I just wanted to get that out there.
I have just one comment, because I know Nicole, you mentioned the other day that we were concerned about teachers being overloaded and this is another thing on the plate. And you know, as far as entering the 20th century and into the 21st century, our country and states have piled more and more on teachers than at any time in the history of education. I'm a former teacher, spent 19 years in the classroom, so I understand. If a teacher, in my opinion, would ask for one thing, it would simply be give me some time during the day to work with my colleague or time to plan. And what this grant does, it does provide an opportunity for them to have some time where they work with a colleague and they don't have to worry about anything at the moment. So I hope you keep that in mind, we're trying to give them time, that's valuable to teachers.
I appreciate that. I think that was answered when you, when I was told that it wasn't mandatory. So that was my concern with newer teachers being overwhelmed and maybe not wanting to if it was mandatory, but it's not, so that's great.
I would also like to comment that when I was a principal, particularly at the high school, during interviews, when you teachers, I actually got asked questions from applicants, do you have a mentoring program? And some applicants actually made the decision when they already had an offer in another school district to come to our district, you know. You have to understand, teachers want to be successful. You don't want to hire teachers who don't want to be successful because people who want to be successful will want their kids to be successful in class. So that quality, that trait is just really important. And they, they know how they're going to become successful from interacting with experienced teachers and we've provided that in some way or other, but this is taking it to the next level.
Michelle? That technology piece, how much are we paying for that Atlas part of it?
You just took my paper. There are three different. You have the actual email from the vendor. There are a couple of different options and we weren't sure when we met which option we would go with. The cost of the subscription is $2,700 for one year or $56.70 for three years. There's also another option if we go to 50 users or less for a subscription of $1,500 per year. So we hadn't decided which route we were going to go, which subscription were we purchasing. We have enough funds in there, we have over $6,000 budget in the first year. I would propose that we would go ahead and move forward with a three-year subscription since we have the funding for it. Technology, the iPads, cameras, and tripods are not going to cost that much money.
Right, right. And then let's say we get through the three years and we're at the point where we can reapply for the grant. We don't get the grant, then what? What's that look like?
Then we look at other grant funding. We either look at applying for new grants or we look at, some of these, we want to prioritize what is important and possibly pulling them into Title II, which is professional development.
Okay, and then when I, when I look at this, I see a great avenue for professional development. And I agree, I think professional development is a big key to helping us recruit and retain teachers. But what worries me- But what worries me is is there anything in here that is not listed that the district is paying for? Is there any direct costs to us as a district outside of the grant writing cost?
Absolutely not. There are no costs that will be associated or tied to MNO in any way, shape or form. Everything you have seen there from the salaries to the stipends to the subpay, everything will be coming out of the grant. Nothing will come out of MNO. If anything were to, we would look at Title II funding, which is professional development. And if we were short on any of those items, I don't project that because if you look at the numbers, I went a little over each year. We lose a small amount per year so that we're not looking at asking MNO or even one of our other grants for additional funding.
Because I, I would hate to stand something like this up and get it started and then get to year four and go, oops, we don't have it for the other new teachers that are coming in this year.
Well, that's where we're fortunate. We would look at our Title II funding for professional development, look at possibly using some of the funds there.
If I could add to this, right now we have a new teacher orientation and mentoring program. And we currently do a lot of professional development after school that is paid for out of Title II funding. And so the, the master teachers, the stipend really just replaces money that they were, that they're already getting out of Title II. So that money would be ongoing to continue that process. What we gain from this is the expertise through all of this training. And so we've increased our cadre of people who can then provide professional development. And we have freed up a little bit of Title II money in the meantime that can be utilized for some additional professional development.
Thank you.
I'd also love to recognize Jenny Festa who was a major contributor to our recruiting as well and helping us to prepare for this grant.
Any other questions or comments?
I call the question.
Martha Jo.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney? John Mastin?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
And Nicole Collet? Yes.
Okay. Item 4.2 is the second presentation, review of revised policy BBAA, reporting of hazards warning system. And I'll let Diana speak to that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen. We do recommend that the board approve the second presentation of revised policy on reporting of hazards and warning systems. This was a result of House Bill 2190 that initiated some changes to the education related statutes. The changes have been made on the policy and our, the statutory language is all that has been added and deleted. This policy is related to the notices required to be used when using pesticides and there have been no changes made since the first reading on December 20th.
Can I get a motion?
I would move we approve 4.2.
Any discussion, questions? Martha Jo?
Alan Ward?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Collet?
Yes.
Okay, moving into new business. Action item 5.1, approval of hearing officer for the 2017 school year.
The staff recommends that the governing board approve Mrs. Becky Goldberg as the hearing officer for 2017, which is funded from Medicaid. Mr. Brad Gardner, who is our Director of Educational Services, who you just met, presides when Mrs. Goldberg is unavailable. It is further recommended that the governing board, per district policy, continue to meet an executive session to hear all expulsion hearings referred to or requested by administration. The board can appoint a hearing officer to oversee discipline suspension hearings. The board could also hear them themselves. Due to the increased number of discipline hearings, a hearing officer is recommended and the position can be reviewed annually. One of the things that would be important to note is that the hearing officer is approved every January and that in the hearings, a special services representative continues to attend if there's a discipline hearing. The other advantage to having a hearing officer is should there be an appeal of a request for extended suspension, the board then is able to have a fresh eye for the appeal.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on that?
Can I make a motion? We approve 5.1. Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have anybody else in our thought process outside of Mrs. Goldberg?
I am not aware. I know that at one time, the time that she was appointed and she was trained and I'm not aware that there are any other candidates. We can certainly find that out.
She's done it in the past. In the past, Lee Barnes was the hearing officer and he was an ex-teacher at the high school. Hearing officers are, we were a little late putting in hearing officers, but what happened is on these discipline cases, it occupied a lot of time with the board. A lot of schools use them, most schools use them now. And just like the superintendent mentioned, it does give, it's a different avenue so that by the time if a problem, if they reappear on discipline issues, they reappear in front of the board, but their initial contact is with the hearing officer. So many of the school boards have gone to this and she's very experienced. She's done, and she's an ex-school board member too.
Any other discussion or questions?
Just out of curiosity, say, have we identified someone if for some reason she was not available?
Yes, Mr. Gardner is the one who sits in when she's not available.
Okay, Martha Jo?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Collet?
Yes.
Okay, moving to action 5.2, approval to discontinue the K-12 participation fee of $2 per year beginning in the 2017-18 school year. Mrs. Sayers?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the board approve the discontinuance of participation fee of $1 per year per student for 17-18. In terms of tax credit dollars, those need to be used to fund extracurricular activities and the statute in the past has required that in order to qualify for tax credit dollars, the students must be required to pay a fee. So every student was charged a fee so that the identified activities could then qualify for tax credit dollars. The House Bill 2190 also changed the statute so that it no longer requires that a fee be charged in order for an activity to have tax credits applied to it. So there's no need for us to continue to fee. The change in the language, if you're interested, is on page 50 on line nine where it shall is removed and is now says made. Now the clubs and the activities that are eligible for tax credits, those must be approved by the board and that list should come to the board annually. We will be taking that list back to principals and making sure that the clubs and activities that are on there are approved and that those that no longer, that don't charge fees can be added to the list or any new clubs could be added to the list. So that will be coming back to the board this spring.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion. We approve 5.2 as listed. Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Collet?
Yes.
Action item 5.3, resolution number 16-17-11, authorizing interim authority to execute legal and other documents on behalf of the district. Mrs. Sayers?
You're recommending that the board approve the tax resolution, which you just stated the content of that, which would allow our directors Denise Minor, Aggie Walter and Brad Gardner to sign in the event that we needed a signatory and the Director of Business Services was not available. At the time that we brought this forward, we had not filled the Director of Business Services position and were concerned that there would be a lengthy vacancy in that term. As I'm very pleased that the board has appointed a director, however, that person does not start until February 1st and will also be doing some duties in terms of transitioning the school. So I would recommend that, that we continue with this resolution as an interim, that it would be good through just this, rest of the school year.
Can I get a motion?
I would move that we approve 5.3 with the added caveat that it's valid until the end of the school year. Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Martha Jo?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Collet?
Yes.
And now we're into informational reports and I'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Get to do the talking. Well, of course, we have our gifts and donations, which I know I have. And one of the things I would like to point out, and we just unfortunately had this weekend not the greatest weather for all of the events that were scheduled, but on this month's donations, we have, the Buses by the Bridge group donated $1,000 to each of our elementaries and middle schools for them to choose how they would spend it. And so we have that $7,000 donation here. We've also received several donations for arts at the elementary level and that adds up to several hundred dollars. And our, I wanted to point out that Calvary Baptist has, and the Havasu RV Resort have contributed for standardized sweatshirts at the middle school and high school because that does tend to be a more expensive item and that allows more students to take advantage of, if they have need, getting those standardized shirts. So we are up to so far this year, $21,000. I'm sorry, this month is $21,000, almost $22,000 and the year-to-date is over, is $191,000. So that's an amazing amount. I would also like to share a couple of things in, just that happened this week so that the board can recognize them publicly. As you all voted on Friday, we do have a new Director of Business Services who is in the room, but to congratulate Mr. Michael Murray. We also had, I just found out today, I guess it was a notice from either Friday or this weekend, that Tracy Presley from the high school, who is a counselor, was awarded the Arizona Counselor of the Year by the Arizona Counseling Association. So.
And the counselors were chosen as an exemplary department to Arizona School Board?
Yes.
And why didn't Tracy give something to go in the news?
Our counselors were also invited to present at the Arizona School Boards Association for the, I'm going to, I butchered the name of it, Scott, the?
ECAW.
ECAW, thank you. ECAW, thank you. And then the final thing I would like to bring up and just as we were talking about, at the beginning of the year, I was sharing with the board about our numbers and our enrollment. And so we have our first report for January, January 13th, our enrollment. And I'm disappointed that we are, our 100th day in 2016 was the end of January and we are currently three students under that amount. And so if we continue to drop in students, we will be under again for our 100th day. If we were dealing with this year's current year funding, that would impact our funding for the month because we were below our numbers. As a look from the, the numbers being three down, we actually are down more than that at the high school, but we do have mid-year graduates. So we had about seven students who graduated mid-year. And so that's not the real, that happens every year, so that's not the cause of that decline of our mid-year graduates. There are other losses throughout. But it's a net loss of three. That's unfortunate. And then the final in the board packet is the special services monthly update. And we are going to be providing to the board updates about what's happening in our different divisions. Just one of the interesting facts that is listed here that I would like to highlight is that we, at the end of December, end of first semester, we had an enrollment of 655 students, which included our preschool. And for those of you who are interested, that is 12% of our population that we have that receives special services.
I appreciate those new updates at the back. So it's very nice. That's it? Okay. Our next scheduled board meeting is going to be February 21st at 6:00 PM. Yes?
Hey, one thing, the high school, I found out, is having a big event up here this weekend. They're going to host the Arizona, the Student Council. And I guess it's what, about 2,000 kids are going to be up there?
Yes, we have 2,000 students that are not ours. And another 200 advisors. And when I shared with my staff about the things that are happening on our campus, and I think this is a nice gesture back to the community when they, they agreed and voted yes, yes for us, that we called about two weeks ago and there's not a single hotel room available this weekend. They only eat one meal on our campus. So not only are we filling hotels in our community, they're going to eat in these restaurants as well. So it is not only something that's happening at the high school, it's happening in our community as well.
Kids eat a lot of food. But I think it's a real credit to the high school and to the people, like I think, what is it, who's the Ramrod, Jenny Sutner and others that are helping her. This is a big event. It's quite an honor for the community and for the high school. I just thought it should be mentioned here. There are a lot of good things going on in our district.
And with a shout out to Dale Ganger and to Jamie Festa because I'm sure they were very involved with pulling this off.
No, I just live with the child. Ready for her to stop weeping every time I talk to her.
Any other announcements? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Collet?
Yes.